I uh in the seven block I drove today. I was able to get. Yeah. My sister lives in like a row house. There's all the things, and then a garage is kind of in front. But they have fences between the yard.
Yesterday is fine.
It's just there. So you always see this garage garage and kind of thing behind it. And I went, you know, okay, it's search for focus.
Well, I want to eat it too. No, I need it. I think sometimes it's way too many. What was it?
Her yard is.
On range, not too far. Yep.
Like you did that's imminent. So if you feel like you're in a place. Oh, they're missing a tree. I could see her.
I guess if she's living there, she likes it. That's what I'm trying to do.
She said it over here. She said, I'm here. Okay, my mom's like here. Here, I'm trapping you in this. On the weekends when I sleep. All I do, I'm gonna go to sleep. Home, put dinner off TV on sleep. Then we'll go sit in the back, have a little snack, and listen to that. Come on, it's cake. I was expecting to eat out. He was handing you.
Yeah, everybody's here. It's fine.
We don't need me. Everyone, welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four. We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, approve the council agenda and the agenda additions or corrections.
Uh, Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you.
All right. Uh, next, the invitations from Oak Heights Church. Good evening.
Greetings, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I just begin by expressing again my thank you. Um, as a active member of the Ecumenical Ministerial Association, I want to always express my thanks for the uh city council here and your openness for the various expressions of faith within our community to offer this prayer. Um, I also uh meet with the Ecumenical Ministerial Association. We've met with McLeod County Health Services, McLeod County Alliance, and others as we continue to learn for how can we be better serving this church as the community around us. So the church family at Oak Heights Covenant Church always upholds you as city leaders, as staff, in our regular prayers. And so tonight, let me share this prayer with you. Let us pray. Creator God, in the words from the letter of James, every good and perfect gift comes from you. In the season of spring, we thank you even for this late snow. We thank you for the moisture upon the fields as we look for the planting and growing season, which are just ahead. We thank you for the farmers in this area, and we pray that they will be able to get into their fields soon and that what is planted may become a bountiful harvest in the months ahead. Tonight, I pray for each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Chad, Dave, Pat, Tim, and of course, our mayor, Gary. May they graciously listen to each of the things put before them tonight and make clear decisions on what will continue this community in its growth. May Hutchinson always be a community and a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people at whatever age or stage of life they are find and uh care and compassion, and where all people will thrive. May our city leaders have a sense of satisfaction in the work that they accomplish here tonight. We pray this in our gracious name. Amen.
Thanks. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, each and every public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, public comment, uh citizens addressing the council, just please come forward and see your name and address for the record. All right, uh approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March twelfth, two thousand twenty four.
Make motion to approve them.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries consent agenda? This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of request of FAA approval of agreement for transfer of entitlements. Uh, B is approval of water meter replacement project. C is approval of Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Agreement and Declaration of Easement. Uh, D is approval of forgivable loan agreement with Danny Bear Children. Uh, E is approval of resolution number one five seven one three. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of final plat for Ledweek's addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. F is approval of resolution number one five seven one five. Resolution creating police cadet position and amending the two thousand twenty four position classification table. And G is uh claims appropriation and contract payments. Any have anything anybody wants pulled off for discussion? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda. Approve?
Second.
Motion by Chad, uh by Pat, second by Chad to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say nay. Motion carries. Uh, can we skip down to public?
Can we just do new business?
Sure.
We got three items underneath that that way of Dan and let me, I'm sure Mike's report will be wonderful, but I think we have to.
Well, skip down to new business.
Dan was bawling.
Okay. Uh, new business, resolution number one five seven one four. Resolution approving plans in specification and ordering advertisement for bid for the Hutchinson City Center roof replacement project.
Yes, as you ordered in your packet, uh there is information relative to the uh bid request that we have. Uh, JJ would typically be handling that, but he is off uh this week. So what Sapp is asking for is approval of that resolution, approving plan business specs to advertise for bids for the city center roof project. That roof project is something we've had on our five years. So it's planned here for several years and um actually, one of the notes I got from JJ was to make sure that uh monitor the buckets in the bag that looks like the rainwater or the the snow melt. So I think the timing is good to get the roof replaced.
Any motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the resolution. Any other discussion?
Was the bid done by the guys? Four hole?
Did you look at all of the scribbled? No, that was uh, that's that's one's project.
Well, that's coming up.
All right, we'll call a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Dan. Uh, resolution number one five seven one six. Resolution accepting bid and awarding contracts for V M F baseball field lighting project.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Put it in your packet this evening is a resolution to accept the bids for the V M F baseball lighting project. Bids were open on Wednesday, March twentieth at two P M. Two items were bidded out, one for materials, the other for installation. We received um really favorable bids, two bids for materials for Moscow lighting and a thesis lighting lighting. And then for installation, we received a total of seven bids. Uh, the two low bids were Moscow lighting and Starry Electric for a total of two hundred and thirty seven thousand and twenty dollars, which is well under our cost estimate of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, the bids were uh being renewed by S L A and included the unofficial bid tabulation in your packet. Um, and those stand as is for today. So Sapp are requesting um to approve the resolution and award the bids to Moscow lighting and Starry Electric.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve project. Other discussion?
So we opened those late last week. That's why you have the the hammering.
We opened them on the day afternoon and everything was beautiful.
The whole wide space.
It benefited his time to review.
I call the booking. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Lynn. Uh, lift station improvements. Mr. Stifter.
Is Mike on over there? No, he is. Um, similar, we received uh some really good bids uh for this project also. This is a really a phase two to a project that started last year. Um, R and R submitted the little bid that we're recommending for approval tonight. Uh, again, this project, unlike probably previous ones, um we would hope to finish up kind of a late summer, early fall. A lot of times these have extended more into kind of a late fall, early winter. And so uh we're hoping to get a little bit earlier start than usual. Tim is available in here tonight, too, if there are any questions more specific to the project itself. But otherwise, we would look for uh approval uh with recommendation of R and R.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. We're gonna do public works here and report.
And I uh, this is again giving credit where credit is due. John has put together this report for a number of years. And so this is kind of by way of just an introduction that I'll do for uh both John and Donovan. Um, John, uh, as you all know, is retiring here at the end of May. Um, this may be really one of his last kind of formal opportunities to present at uh council um here tonight. I think he's got about an hour long. Kidding, kidding. Um, but uh also kind of an opportunity, I know you've probably have seen Donovan present uh before, but first time as the public works manager incoming and he started here at the first part of March. So they're gonna tag team this episode tonight, and so I will turn it over to uh to them. I'll bring it up here real quick. Well, I know you gave him an hour, but we, they've got eighteen minutes. There you go, John.
John said he has seventeen and a half minutes, so.
All right, uh, well, this is uh, comes with a little bit of bittersweet feeling. Uh, this has been a wonderful place to work. I've enjoyed my years here and uh it's been good. Let's, we'll leave it at that. Uh, Public Works is responsible for some of the most uh basic services within the city. And Neil Peterson, who was the former mayor of Bloomington, he summarized municipal services as the big three, drinking, driving, and drainage. Um, obviously, we're involved in a lot of that. And uh, you know, so most of the services that we provide are uh are really uh fit into those categories. Things like uh being able to move around the city and make sure we have good, good utility services, so. Um, building and paying for the infrastructure really makes up about two thirds of what we normally spend in a year with about a third of it covering the services that are provided by the department. Engineering works with a variety of stakeholders to design, plan, and administer, and construct a wider array of infrastructure that provides for a connected transportation system, quality facilities, and quality services for utilities. And uh, the idea is to do that in a way that creates a functional, clean, and healthy environment within the city. Of particular note, in two thousand twenty three was the appointment of Mike Stifter, Public Works Director, early in two thousand twenty three. And Mike has melded into the Public Works Department and has utilized experienced and talented staff and and his talents to move the department in a good direction, so. It's good to have Mike with us. Uh, operations and maintenance is made up of the operators, mechanics, and technicians that are involved in day-to-day operations and maintaining a wide variety of infrastructure, equipment, and facilities. Two thousand twenty three was surprisingly a year of stability within our staffing. Except for me. In May of last year, I had a stroke. And uh, I've recovered. Hopefully, I will continue to get better, but because of the effects of the stroke, I've had to back off. And I went more to a part-time role, and then Donovan took over here in March. And so a big thank you goes out to Bruce Fenske and the others that stepped up to make things happen this summer. And uh, we look forward to having Donovan in that role from now on, so. The water staff is the day-to-day operations of the water treatment plant and all the process equipment facilities that go with that. The water storage, water meters, and related infrastructure. And working together with wastewater, they help to ensure that all the permit requirements are met and that the plants are operating efficiently. Uh, in July, Mike Lean, longtime senior water plant operator, resigned. And Jim Novatrol moved up into his role. And then Randy Check uh transferred over from the wastewater plant. And I think that'll help, you know, uh maintain that strong connection between the water and wastewater plants. The wastewater staff again uh focuses on the plant. Uh, so there's a lot of process equipment in the wastewater world that needs to be monitored and take care of. The facilities are extensive. Uh, they have thirteen lift stations, fifteen lift stations, biosolids disposal, and then a whole bunch of related facilities and infrastructure. They also work together with the water staff to make sure that both plants are operating effectively and then meet the permit, permit requirements. Staffing at the wastewater plant was a blur of activity in two thousand twenty three. And it started in February when Matt Keller, who was a water wastewater technician, resigned. Randy Check then moved over to the water plant. Uh, Paul Moe was hired but resigned a month and a half later, or a few months later in October. So uh, he wasn't there very long. Zach came and Zach Peterson came in October. Uh, John Kent went nor, went to the dark side for just a few weeks. Came back to the light. So it was, it was a crazy year for Tim and his crew. There, so when it's all said and done, there's two vacancies that re, that have not yet been filled. Um, and part of the reason for that was we wanted to wait and see what happened with some of the other key positions within Public Works, how that was gonna shake out, so. Hopefully, they'll be able to work on that this year. Uh, improvement projects in two thousand twenty three focused on our priority routes with partial reconstruction of Roberts Road southwest, east of the high school. And that rounded out a project that started when the high school was built a few years ago. In addition, we did larger mill overlay projects on Century, on School Road Northwest. And rounding out the projects were uh the two alleys, Fire Department and Taco John's. The winter of two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three was particularly nasty, unlike this year. And resulted in significant street damage. Resulted in uh several maintenance overlays being done on Second Avenue, California Street, Dale Street, and Market Street. In addition, the operators placed over four hundred tons of patching material to address the roadway damage last winter. Over a hundred deduct meters were installed for irrigation to address the changes in our utility structure, our utility rates. Um, other projects were the SCADA security upgrades, reconstruction of a lift station up on the northwest part of town. Uh, we did some sampling for P F O S. And we're continuing on the Campbell and Otter Lakes restoration project. We're getting to the point uh where we're looking at designs for actual construction that are better than thirty percent, so. Um, the other big piece was a resiliency grant that we got. We did stormwater modeling for the north side of the community and identified a handful of projects that could potentially improve um stormwater up in that neighborhood. Looking forward to this year. We anticipate seeing additional work being done on Campbell and Otter Lake. Refining of various uh facility and treatment plant process controls will continue at the water and wastewater plants. Stormwater improvement, pond improvements will be done. In addition, we did get a grant for stormwater modeling to be done in the southern half of the city, excluding areas that we've recently done on our own. Um, using the information both from the north side and the south side, we'll be able to prioritize necessary stormwater projects. Partial reconstruction of Michael Court will support additional apartment building, housing. And then a project along Oakland Avenue will connect some sewer that needs to be taken care of. And uh, then we'll be working in the downtown area, Franklin Street, Washington Avenue. And that, that follows the reconstruction that was done on Main Street some time ago, a couple of years ago. Efforts continue to improve our facilities and equipment with two significant equip, equipment acquisitions. One is a sewer jet back truck. They're very expensive. I'm sure you saw here not long ago. Uh, and then, of course, a snowplow, also uh very expensive. So this is uh some of the planning and studies and and initiatives that we're working on. Uh, most of them I've talked about already, but we kind of track those separately from actual uh bricks and mortar type projects. The community survey is a helpful tool for us as several of the categories relate to public works. And we saw significant increases from two thousand nineteen in street repair and cleaning and street cleaning, which was good to see, cause now that brings those scores up into the similar category for other communities our size or in that are part of the network. Um, we, we really were below on our street repair prior to this, this uh survey, so that's good. In our pavement management, um, we've had this similar score in two thousand seventeen, twenty twenty, and two thousand twenty three. Uh, the average of condition, the average condition has been very stable. And uh, in our world, that's exactly what we want. We want to see that uh network PCI stay as stable as possible. What, uh, uh, so we're, we're, we're doing our best when we get about a C plus, okay? If you look at a seventy-five, that's about a C plus grade. That's what we hope for. And like many of my guys uh remind me is that Cs get degrees, so. And Cs in our case are are very good. Uh, stability is more what we're looking for. And we've achieved that over the last ten years. And uh, that indicates to us that our level of spending and our project selection has been on, you know, adequate for maintaining that network average PCI. Our total utility rates, when you look at water, sewer, and storm, uh compared to outside, outstate Minnesota cities that participate in the A E two S annual survey, we're right in the average area. Our total rates are substantially lower than average of the top five cities. And uh, there were significant changes to the utility rates in two thousand twenty three. Uh, the rates were put together with the goal of creating a more fair rate system that better distributes fixed and variable costs while keeping uh total revenues roughly the same. And I think uh we were successful in that. In two thousand twenty three, a new service started where we will help utility customers to repair their sewer and water surfaces. Uh, working with customers, the city will participate in costs up to eighty five hundred dollars for those repairs. And for that, the customers are charged dollar a month for both water and wastewater to fund the project program. The program re, again, represents a win-win-win in that the customer doesn't have a shock of a large unexpected expense. And the city gets to make repairs that are effective. And, and then the city also can control the restoration efforts. And then uh, the uh contractors like it, cause they get paid directly from us, so. Uh, we did have a rash of uh sewer repairs that uh took place and that, and we're attributing that to several dry years in a row. That's usually when we have the worst problems with sewer. Our water rates are slightly below average. The rate structure now includes a conservation rate, which is required by the state. Base charges are based on resident, single-family residential unit or reduced multifamily uh base rate. And then uh, commercial customers' base rate corresponds to the size of their water meter. Residential water has an increasing block structure based on six thousand gallons per month. And commercial rates are uniform, which meets again the conservation rate uh required by the state. For irrigation, we ask that customers install a irrigation deduct meter to avoid the wastewater charges for the, for that water. Our wastewater rates are slightly above average. Uh, again, with the new rate structure, the uh single-family unit, a reduced unit, a base unit for multifamily housing, and then commercial rates and residential rate uses remain the same. So um, again, our goal was to se, segregate the fixed and the variable costs without increasing the overall amount of revenue that we have. And I think we, we got pretty close to that. Stormwater rates are a little lower, are well below average. And in two thousand twenty three, there was no real change to the rate structure. Um, we base it on the single-family home or uh for residential properties and rates for other types of properties and uh take into account the use of the property and also the size. uh take into account the use of the property and also the size parcel. Um, we are recommending a phased-in rate increase to account for costs of operating a residential leaf vacuum service. And uh depending on what we find from these two stormwater studies and modeling, we may need to think about increasing rates to cover some capital projects. But even with the additional for the uh leaf program will be well certainly in our average. Operations and maintenance represents about half the hours worked in public works, engineering, water, and wastewater making up the other half. And the work at the wastewater and water treatment plants represents most of the homogenous hours worked. Uh, we have another big chunk in there is compensated absences. That's vacation, comp time, sick leave, things like that of about fifteen percent, which means that any given day we've got four, four guys that are gone out of our department. Um, engineering is about thirteen percent of it. And the rest of it is, you can see it's split up amongst a whole bunch of different uh categories, and those are mostly uh done by the operation ma- and maintenance department, so. Overtime is paid when employees work more than forty hours per week. Premium time is pay at overtime rates based on their actual start time until the beginning of their regular shift. Uh, and is earned when employees are called into work without notice. Most overtime is paid for treatment and plant operations or engineering. Most premium time is paid for treatment and plant operations or for snow and ice. And twenty twenty-three was a little bit different than a five-year average, most notably in the area of distribution and collection systems and maintenance. Um, what, what can we attribute, what we attribute that to is again the additional uh efforts we've had to deal with sewers uh because of dry conditions. So there you go. It's a riveting thing. I've been up here begging for money for twenty-seven years. I thought I could give it at least one last try, you know, and I'll be living on a fixed income, so any donations would be appreciated. But with that, I'll, I'll just ask that Donovan, if you want to introduce yourself and kind of how, especially how this last few days has gone.
So I'll be guided by the mayor and council and just add some revenue to this. I'm just very much looking forward to getting started. I've served as the arborist, as you know, for eight years. Um, and several years ago, I just realized that I would like to aspire to more, and so I started working towards not anticipating any of the health issues. I thought this was several years down the road, but just looking forward to trying to, to obtain this position and wound up obtaining it. So again, very much looking forward to my expanded role working with the city, so.
Couldn't have picked a better guy.
Well, John, um obviously thank you for, I know we'll see you obviously before your retirement, but thank you for your twenty-seven years of service with the city for the work that you did on the interim when we were in between Kent and Mike coming on board and uh you'll definitely be missed around here, but thank you for your years of service. Enjoy retirement. Um, and Donovan, we look forward to you stepping into that new role as well, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, John, it was a pleasure working with you. I, any time I needed something, all I did is have to give you a call and it got done. I, I know Donovan will step right into that because anytime I had a problem with a tree, called Donovan and it was done, so welcome aboard and John, thank you for your years. Thank you. All right, we're going to jump up to our public hearing. Uh, we have resolution number one, five, seven, one, two. Adoption of the city five-year street reconstruction plan and authorizing the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds.
Good evening, Mayor Council members. Um, just gonna pull this up here. I just wanted to give you a little snapshot of the projects that we're looking to bond for this year.
And if you click on the X where it says all tools, that'll go away.
Okay, so this is going to be another unique year for our bonding. Um, as I explained at last week or last meeting, we typically issue the four twenty-nine special assessment bonds. That's not going to work for um all of our projects this year simply because we didn't generate enough assessments uh to generate enough bond proceeds to pay for our costs. So we're going to actually be issuing four seventy-five bonds for several of our projects this month at the, actually at the top half of this spreadsheet. That would include Franklin Street, Oakland Avenue, and then Washington Avenue. But the one kicker we have is, is the Michael Court Road Improvements. Uh, we can't use four seventy-five bonds and Nick will um speak more to four seventy-five bonds when, when he gets up here, but um the Michael's, Michael's Court Road Improvement, since it's new infrastructure, new roadway, new gutters and curbing, we can't use the four seventy-five street reconstruction bonds. So we're going to actually be issuing four twenty-nine bonds for that Michael's Court project. Because we do have enough special assessments off of Michael's Court to um to generate sufficient bonding proceeds to, to pay for those costs. So with that said, these are the projects we're looking to bond for, but tonight the public hearing is, is mainly focusing on the four seventy-five bonds that are on the top part of this spreadsheet. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Anhut. He's with Ellers. They're our financial consultant when it comes to bonding projects.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Nick Anhut from Ellers. Uh, and so as the council is aware, but maybe for the public, you know, the issuance of debt resides in state statute. It allows cities to issue for a variety of projects, but there's a process that you need to follow in order to get there. And so as Andy alluded to, um, the process for this year's project is going to be kind of bifurcated or two, two different approaches. Um, when a, when a project uh has assessments that cover at least twenty percent of the bonded amount, um, you're able to rely on the four twenty-nine proceedings, so the public hearings that you hold for the projects, adopting the assessments, and that, that covers uh providing the council authorization to move ahead and issue debt for those projects. But when those assessments are short, you need to utilize another statute to get that authority. And so chapter four seventy-five does allow for projects that don't have enough assessments that are dedicated towards reconstructing existing uh roadways or, or uh even trails in some instances. Uh, we can utilize that process, and so we're here tonight to, to start that ball rolling. And so uh that process requires the council to hold a public hearing to identify the projects that it intends to use this statute for, um, allow for public testimony. And then once that hearing is closed, then um the council can adopt those projects within a street reconstruction plan. And that opens a thirty-day petition period where the public could come forward and say, we want to put this measure on a future ballot uh so that the authority to issue debt resides on a referendum. Uh, but if the thirty days passes and there is no petition or no valid petition that's filed, uh then the authority rests on the council and the council can determine when the appropriate time is to issue debt for the projects. So that's what we're here for tonight is to, uh, these three projects have been identified within a street reconstruction plan. They do satisfy the statutory requirements. Uh, the bonding is anticipated in total to be about two-point-two-five million this year. Um, that reconstruction component would be one-point-seven-five of that amount. Uh, it will be repaid over a period of fifteen years, which is fairly standard for the city's issuance for its, its street improvement projects. Um, and the amount of levy associated on average is anticipated to be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. All that's included within the plan. Um, and I'd be happy to address any of the council's questions, but we definitely recommend moving forward with the public hearing and then considering the resolution to adopt this plan and move ahead with the petition process. Thank you.
Here any questions for Nick?
No.
Otherwise, we'll open it up for your public comment.
Yep, I want to just first explain to the public because we have two public hearings tonight, so they're just at least familiar with what we're doing. The first one is on the bonding, um, on the proposed four seventy-five bonding. The second hearing, which will follow, follow immediately, this one will be on um, the twenty twenty-four street improvement projects, and that's the, the ones that, so that's actually on the project itself. This is on the bonding. I know it's maybe a little awkward, but the first public hearing is on the bonding. The second public hearing will be on the projects themselves. So with that, um, you open it up for the public?
Open it up for public comment on the bonding issue?
Um, if you wish to provide public comment, please come forward to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All say nay. Motion carries. Motion.
Resolution.
Motion. For the resolution number one, five, seven, one, two.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. All right, the second public hearing, uh, assessment hearing and project award for the two thousand twenty-four street improvement projects, letting number one and projects number twenty-four dash oh one, twenty-four dash oh two, twenty-four dash oh five, twenty-four dash oh six, and twenty-four dash oh seven. And there's two resolutions underneath there. First one is one, five, seven, one, zero, resolution accepting bids and awarding contracts. And resolution number one, five, seven, one, one, resolution adopting assessments.
Mike?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, I'll take a few minutes just to go through the projects. This is a, again, kind of an update from our November presentation that we had done, but reflects our, our bid numbers that we received um as well as all updated information um that I'll go through um by way of the, the projects that we anticipate. Um, again, our project scope this year, um, you'll note, uh, projects one and four, that was the Uptown Grand Project. Um, we had bid that as an alternate. Um, at this point, we're not recommending uh proceeding on that at this point. Um, we will uh give that future consideration, but all the other projects noted here, two, three, five, six, and seven, again, five represents, uh, that's the upper, upper uh one there that uh represents Michael Court. Um, but everything else, uh, as John had mentioned, Washington and Franklin are in the downtown. Um, seven, of course, is the fire department parking lot. And then number three is that stretch on Oakland. Um, the numbers there before you in green are the um, um, project cost um per, per the bid. Um, most of them were at uh just below or just above um the engineer's estimates. So uh we received very favorable bids and uh three that were um below our engineer's estimate. Uh, again, just a quick review of each of the projects. Franklin Street itself, again, in the downtown, um, a lot of, uh, basically a reclaim project. You'll maybe remember in November, we've kind of gone through the reclaim process, um, what that entails. There's a little bit of sanitary sewer repair and then just some spot work um with street lights as well as some pedestrian crossing area. Again, uh, we have worked with the J.C.'s uh to accommodate the water carnival um as that travels up uh Fourth Avenue, so a provision's been made there as well as contacts made in the downtown area just to accommodate um general commerce, uh, both with the bank, some of our restaurants, et cetera. Um, Oakland Avenue um has been mentioned today. I think John again mentioned that in his report. Um, we have some sewer work, especially in that block from Ivy to uh Hassan um that we will get corrected. Um, there's kind of a mishmash of uh utility in that area. Again, generally a reclaim project beyond that, some drain tile added, and then again, based on Donovan's recommendation, a few trees for removal, and then again, upgraded to street lighting. Michael Court, um, as has been mentioned as part of our process here tonight, this does include new infrastructure. Um, for the most part, there's a small stub of uh street that had been um added in a number of years ago. For the most part, we're finishing this entire portion out, building out the cul-de-sac as kind of shown here, but also at the same time adding some new infrastructure. Uh, there is sanitary already in place. Uh, we will extend that up to basically the township line to the very north beyond lots one-twenty and one-twenty-five. Um, but we'll be adding now water and storm um in addition to that. Temp access has been made uh both for property forty-five. Um, we have uh worked with Craig Eggers and his uh company on it um as far as access into the site during construction as well as the temp access that you maybe already see that um allows for access into one-oh-five, which is getting ready to open here soon. Um, one-fifteen is under construction and then the rest will be built out in time. Washington Avenue, um, again, a lot of uh asphalt in places has got some particularly thick areas, twelve inches plus. Um, but we'll be using some glass grid. We've had very good luck with that um over the years and provide some additional stability. Again, some spot work and curb, um, sidewalk repairs, et cetera, a little bit of sanitary work. And then again, some tree removal, generally ash trees. Um, and then we did just uh look at a change order, uh, potentially add a catch basin near the tennis court area to improve some drainage in that area. Um, and then this again is the fire department. You'll remember last year, John had mentioned this, the Taco John's and Fire Department Alley, Alley fifty-five. Um, that dark blue is the area that was done last year. That portion is complete. Uh, we will now come in and do that lighter blue area, which is the parking lot itself. And um as this last, I think, slide will show, uh, here's the general breakdown, our construction engineering consultant, and then total project cost of two-point-nine million. Um, our project funding uh breakdown as far as the improvement bonds themselves, the assessments that are anticipated, and then our utility splits. Uh, that ARPA um funding that you note there is for the uh Fire Department uh parking lot portion itself, so. Um, water, wastewater, storm assessments, and the improvement bonds will take care of the other four projects, but the parking lot for uh, for the Fire Department is taken care of with ARPA funds. So, and that is it otherwise. So entertain any questions you might have.
Mike, maybe for the public, could you explain what the difference is between, you know, we talk about a reclaim, mill and overlay, and I know we're not doing a reconstruct, but just so they're familiar with what that is, so.
Yeah, it, it, very good question, Matt. Um, again, kind of in order of, I would say you have your basic repair um projects um that weren't mentioned, but I'll mention is, is the very basic would include more of a crack seal um type repair, um, a maintenance overlay. Um, last year, maintenance overlay projects would have included like Second Avenue, um, Market Street, um, Dale, um, some of those. Um, mill and overlay, a little bit more extensive, probably more of a complete mill of the street would have been our um school road project, our um, um, century um last year were the two that we had done. Um, and then you get into a reclaim where it's a little bit more complete road surface removal, gets into the subgrade a little bit more, um, much more extensive, but still no utility work done. And then you get into partial or full reconstruction where you get into, again, Oakland's probably a good example of a partial um reconstruction with some utility work. Um, whereas a, a full reconstruction would have been like Roberts last year. Uh, much more extensive, much more costly as you go. Um, again, um, you know, maybe some surface treatments, um, the replay project or product that John has used over the years is a good maintenance, um, you know, type product and kind of sealing um the, the road surface itself. And then just about everything else I detailed provides some much more extensive and then more costly as you go until you get to that full reconstruction. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mike, Mike, you made a comment and it's on here even, uh, this concern about the purchasing power eroding. Are we looking at, are these milling and surfacing different options going, going to be, uh, I guess, more affordable in the future? Are you seeing more of that being done as opposed to reconstruction?
Yeah, I, I would say we will, we will probably look at more mill and overlay, um, you know, type projects. But um at the same time, we evaluate, we do the condition. But, um, at the same time, we evaluate, we do the condition index of our road surfaces. Any road that we take a look at, um, we will take a look at the utilities underneath so that we're not providing, you know, maybe that, that visual above ground, um, improvement, but leaving real concerns in the ground for someone to have to deal with later. Um, so we'll continue to balance that. But we definitely have seen, as you've seen with the two housing workshops, especially in the first one, you know, costs continue to go up. You know, our infrastructure costs have more than doubled in just the ten-year timeframe. So the buying power of that same one point nine million is not what it was, you know, just a couple of years ago, pre-COVID, uh, much less in these last couple of years. But we continue to be as strategic as we can. Probably with that not changing, it will result in more mill and overlay than especially a full reconstruction. Um, but we'll probably do some sewer lining and other types of things to preserve the infrastructure as much as we can too. And the C I P process this year will, will give all of that a good evaluation. But we feel really good about, um, our project slates for the next couple of years. Um, we've got some state eight dollars again available. We're not using any this year. Um, we typically do in any given year and our, our fund balance right there is, um, is in excess of three million dollars, almost to the point where we need to be spending some of that. We don't have any state eligible, uh, usable state eligible roads this year. One of the reasons we're not using it, but with Dale next year that is, and so we'll be able to use a good portion of that. And then at the same time, hopefully, um, bring in some, um, small segment streets, one, two-block type streets to address, um, some mill and overlay type projects. And then at the same time, have room to still do potentially that uptown grand project. Uh, that twenty twenty-six project slate's probably more, um, focused on some of our stormwater from that north, uh, side resiliency study, Clifton Heights neighborhood in particular. Um, we've got some stormwater, uh, concerns as well as just plain road surface issues. So there'll be some real opportunity there too. And then beyond that, you know, the C I P this year will really start to define more of that twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, um, set of projects.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mike? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, just please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Um, for the public, this is obviously an opportunity for you to come and express any comments regarding the, the project and the assessment that we levy against the individual's property.
Just come up to this podium, ma'am.
Um, my name is Diane Hurl Meyer. I live over in Oakland and Ivy and have a lot of questions about that project. Um, I live on the corner, so I'm not really in Oakland. My address is in Oakland, is Ivy, but I was assessed quite a large amount of money. And my question is, what, what is, what are you doing? I mean, are you digging up the whole street? Are you putting sewer to everybody's house? Are you, I mean, otherwise why would I be included?
Hold on, Mike. Yeah, I'll bring it back and I'd be more than happy to go over, um, kind of the specifics of how your, your, um, area, um, your lot may be impacted more. So again, you mentioned Ivy, um, so I'll kind of point out here. Again, the, the one block that we will be doing of the sanitary where it's a pretty, pretty major reconstruction will be this portion from Ivy to Hassan here. So, um, and which home are you, are you?
Right on the corner of Ivy and Oakland, on the, but, uh, east side.
This one right here?
Right there.
Okay. Um, and so, yeah, I'd have to take a look at kind of our project plan itself, but I'd be happy. I'll get information, um, from you and then we can follow up. We have our project staff members who've worked on this in particular, Chad and Moko, who'll be able to answer and give you a call, um, to kind of go over some of the project specifics and things too. And then we can take a look at your assessment also at the same time as to how that was calculated, so.
Yeah, how it was calculated. And I guess I have a question, or the last time they did a project on Oakland, they dug up down and then they dug way up to my house. And I don't know what, what they're doing now, if either redoing, if they have to redo that, or are we just at the mercy of the city?
Yeah, no, not really. Um, this one block again is very much to clean up, um, some sewer wherever there's interconnect and a lot of other things.
Sewer thing that whatever had something to do with the three houses on the other side.
Correct.
Is that going to entail curbing and all of that? The street is going to?
That, that one block portion will include just about everything because there's just a lot going on in that. Most of the other portion from Echo to Ivy and then that last block, Hassan to Jefferson, is more of a reclaim project. So a little bit more of an in-depth, um, kind of resurfacing project itself, but it's really that Ivy to Hassan that's the most extensive, um, part of the project, um, involving that, that sanitary sewer.
Okay, so our, um, to say, does that mean everybody's house is going to be affected by this? I mean, is it going to be new sewer lines to everybody's house or, because I know that one is a problem all across the street, which, you know, heard about. And does that, I mean, I, they did that last time because of the building that new house.
Yeah, and John, maybe you have a little bit more specific from, I, I know there's several homes that are kind of specifically affected with the sanitary. Most of it's kind of the road surface and what the project will entail, so.
West of Hassan Street, there is, there is not currently sanitary sewer in the street. So we'll be building that out and then connecting the homes up to that new line is what will be done.
Am I included?
Yeah.
Even if I'm on Ivy?
Uh, but, but I, we're, we're pretty confident that the sewer comes to the south there. So.
Yeah, that's what they did last.
Yeah, so what we'll be doing is, is right now, if you go along in Oakland, there isn't any sewer in the ground west of Hassan Street. So we'll be connecting new sewer into that.
Okay.
And then from there going to the homes. So, um, so we're, we're trying to clean up all the Rube Goldberg sewers, uh, systems that people have put together over the years to get, you know, to get a traditional straight in, straight out service for each ho, each house here.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So Diane, when did the city last do a project?
Pardon me?
When did the city last do a project by your house?
Built the new house across the street when the, they had the fire and then they built the new house across the street and closed.
When, you know, when that was?
Maybe three, four years. It hasn't been long.
Okay. About four years ago, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that a city project, John?
We, we're at one hundred and we moved in in twenty nineteen and it was before that because we were not aware of anything.
Matt, are you asking regards to Ivy, a project along Ivy itself or on?
Yeah, well, she said that on the, when the city lasted their projects, I'm just, I don't, I'm trying to think back to my tenure here of us doing a project on, on, um, Oakland.
But it had to do with that new construction.
Yeah, they have to do the new construction and they had to come into my house, into my sewer, whatever, to dig up whatever.
Okay.
It's to avoid that in the future.
Oh, are you a part of the combined service lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have combined service lines?
They dive way up to the house. I don't know.
Sure, so, yes, because one of the reasons we did this project is that this no longer happens in the city where you share a service line with another property. Um, that was done, don't ask me how or why that was done back in the day when it does. So now every property has their own individual service line. And that's part of the work that's getting done now is to correct what wasn't previously, it wasn't previously done that way, so.
There a time that that is going to start?
Generally, uh, we're, we're expecting May sixth or later. So, um, the project limits are May sixth through September thirteenth, I believe.
All summer.
All summer, but we're expecting a, a smaller window. Again, weather and lots of things like that could affect, um, but we would hope, you know, the earlier part of summer itself. Um, of course, some of the downtown work, we're trying to work around the water carnival and things like that too. But you wouldn't see five months of work, but we could see work around town over those five months. Um, but you wouldn't see it necessarily on Oakland for five months. It's probably a two-month out of the five window.
So the, the road will be not serviced, uh, not serviceable or usable for how long?
You know, it likely will be days, weeks kind of thing. We have provisions for garbage, you know, and other things like that during, uh, during that time itself. And there's actually a letter coming out here after the award, um, tonight or the hopeful award tonight. Um, neighborhood letters that will be coming out to all of the residents here in the next two weeks. So that will kind of explain everything from refuse to mail, et cetera, um, as to what residents can expect as well as the project timeline. And then our two project, um, uh, techs, our engineering techs are both listed there with their information and things. But Diane, we'll, we'll do a little follow-up before that even, just kind of go over the scope of the project itself and how your property is affected, um, in particular.
Anything else?
This, no, just I don't have that kind of mind.
We can, we can go over some of the options and things at the same time, you know, in regards to that.
You know, that letter is dated over a ten-year period, but, you know, that's still a lot of money. Or five or two.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. You entertain a motion for those two resolutions?
Make a motion to approve both of them. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. So we have, uh, pedestrian bicycle advisory committee minutes from December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and June of two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, we have the City of Hutchinson financial investment reports from January twenty twenty-four. Uh, Hutchinson financial investment report from February two thousand twenty-four. Hutchinson Housing redevelopment authority board minutes from February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Planning commission minutes from February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Chief Gibson, you have any for us?
I do not.
Donovan, you have anything else for us?
Happy to be here.
John?
Happy to be going.
I guess that was nice and quick, yeah. Mark, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thanks. Uh, Dave, let's start with you.
I really don't have anything. We had, uh, our R T C, uh, meeting today, but it's, uh, same kind of topics. It's always, uh, transportation for the, uh, people that really need it and, uh, going through some things with that. Maybe there's some grants coming up that can be implemented. And other than that, that's, uh, about the extent of it. Thank you. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Pat?
Uh, I had a, uh, pedestrian bicycle, uh, committee meeting last Wednesday and kind of went over the bike walk to school. That's coming up Wednesday, May third. I think most of the council.
Isn't it May?
And, yeah, I thought it was.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. Yes, yes. If we were discussing about having, they actually wanted two and they decided on the eighth, excuse me. And, uh, some of you have gotten invites, I think. It's a worthwhile thing. And then May is Bike Month. Bike to Work Day is Friday, May nineteenth, so hopefully we won't have snow then. That we promoted on Parking Rec. I'll do it on social media. Friends of Lewis Line, um, they're gonna, they're partnering with the D N R to put a porta potty along Lewis Line by Swan Lake. No update, uh, they're, the Friends of Lewis Line are, are, would strongly like to see something done with Dakota Rail, but there are no updates on that. And that's kind of it.
Geez, you, you got invited to bike, to walk to school?
I volunteered. I volunteered.
I was told that I was going to do.
I wanted discovery, so.
That's the difference between the mayor and the councilman.
I guess, so. Chad?
So I haven't had any, uh, any committee meetings, but my son did two-hour maple syrup farming. He was all ready to tap my neighbor's, uh, three maple trees.
They're not in the ballpark, are they?
They're not in the ballpark. So I, I had to tell him to put the brakes on his project because Donovan would come put the brakes on it for him. So, um, despite his disappointment, he did not tamp any trees, so, um.
That you know.
Yeah, so that's all I had, so.
If he doesn't, tell him to do it at night because Donovan's not.
Don't use the bright blue bags next time.
That was one of his ideas, that, yeah, we'll use a brown bucket and nobody will even notice. But yeah, that looked bad, so.
All right, uh, Timmy?
Uh, Sustainability Committee met, uh, this past week and, uh, Donovan was there. He could probably explain more about it than I am. I, I guess the big highlights are as, as Emerald Ash Border kind of moves across the state. Uh, one of the things that kind of came to mind is just a citizen is if you have ash trees, just the cost of removing those trees, start preparing for that now, uh, because it's not inexpensive to take trees down. And, uh, yeah, you're looking at maybe a year, two years down the road. Uh, start budgeting for that so you don't run into, uh, issues, especially if the ash trees close to buildings or homes. Uh, a lot of it, a lot of information on the stormwater mapping, that's, uh, the new technology. I guess it'd be newer technologies, uh, laid out the north end of the city. And they're going to be looking at, uh, provide a lot of great detail on where the water is moving towards, where it's pooling and, and I know the staff is putting together some plans there, uh, as we move forward to alleviate some of that. And then the south end will start here soon. Uh, there was a discussion and we'll have to address this. And I think John's going to bring that forward with the committee, uh, uh, as the committee has a public utilities person on it right now. That's proven to be very beneficial. And the committee structure is looking at how we can maintain that, uh, moving forward because having that person out, having a person from public utilities, there is a, a very positive, uh, step for that committee. So we'll have that discussion moving forward. Uh, other than that, I walked five miles to school both ways in North Dakota, so this shouldn't be a big deal.
Uphill too, right?
Exactly. Nah, there are no hills in North Dakota. It must repeat the snow.
The overpass, the overpass.
The overpasses, okay. But thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Matt?
Not a whole lot for me. Uh, I'm going to be out of the office Thursday and Friday, just so the council is aware of that. Um, and then the last thing, I did send an email to you on this, um, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we're comfortable with putting our name forward in regards to the new cannabis, or potentially trying to get some of the cannabis laws changed that more or less prohibit the cities from being involved with it. We're, there's a group of cities that are, and within that group, a couple of core cities that are looking to kind of bring forward legislation. You know, at this point, I'm going to put our name on it. It doesn't mean anything from us. It just, uh, gives us that flexibility that I think we're hoping to have, uh, as a community. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that, that are, in case you see a name out there, it's not something that's unusual to you, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so.
Going on a little vacate?
Not going anywhere, just, so.
Any who lists that like that. All right, uh, they had a H R A meeting and, uh, you know, it has in, in February, um, in Hutchinson, they had sixteen listings. Um, they had, uh, twelve houses that did sell, that closed in that month. So there's movement around, there's, but.
Still pretty low.
Yeah, I know it is low. I mean, it, you know, yeah. So that's, uh, and the other thing is, you know, we, the H R A does take care of, uh, park towers and, uh, we have, uh, five vacancies in park towers. So trying to fill those, um, so the only thing else I had is, um, actually it was back in, uh, I think it was, uh, November. Uh, one of the utilities commissioners, uh, informed me that he would like to step down and enjoy his retirement. So, um, next month, uh, I think we'll, we'll have to accept his resignation and actually, uh, And actually, uh, when he coming forward and told me that, I started looking for a candidate for his replacement, and I did find a gentleman, and, uh, you know, I talked to all the council, and, uh, actually had him go up and meet with the utilities manager and the rest of the commissioners, and they all gave him their blessing, so I will bring him next, forward next month to get him on the commission, so.
Gary, just as you bring it up too, um, there is going to be a vacancy in the planning commission?
Um, and so, this is more for the public, if anybody's interested in serving on community, that's probably one of our more important ones, there will be a vacancy on there in the next couple of months, so.
You brought that up. And, uh, just for the public, just if you either contact me or just come into this, uh, city hall here, and, um, you can get a, uh, interest form, and, uh, just fill it out and get it back, then we'll give you a consideration. Like Matt said, that, uh, that's a very, very important committee, and that, uh, kind of gives you insight to everything that's going on in, in the town too, so. But that, let's go home.
Motion to adjourn.
I did. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.